Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none being heard, motion carries. Administrative items. Item number two is a continuation of discussion about whether small storage sheds should be allowed on a limited basis within the front yard setback area on residential corner lots. And this is continued from the July 20th meeting. Dean?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what John has in store for us for a slideshow, but we were asked to go out and get additional examples. And according to the script we have there, this is on North Penn. I guess it would be between Ash and Elm, John?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And it would appear to be a corner lot with no fence. And it's pretty hard for us to judge dimensions. This is on North Ohio. Well, I guess we jumped again. Okay. This is North Ohio, east of Ohio at Ash. And... This is at Stack in Ohio. Is that the Millwood one, John?
Yeah, this is 901 Millwood, looking from Lewis Street in. It's really...
Said, "I drive into work on Ohio every day," so I guess this is my driving tour of what I see coming in. So, this is Millwood in Ohio. And again, with the bushes and all, and the fence, it's not particularly noticeable. According to John, this is on Queens.
Correct, yes.
And that would be an example of unscreened and not behind a privacy fence, and certainly in the front yard. Is that Marymount there?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, this is another one. This one, I'm still debating, because one of these I approved a permit for, and it wasn't in the front yard. So, the deception there is that fence is about 20 feet in from the actual property line. So, it appears to the others that it's in the front yard, but it actually isn't. And so, I debated the inclusion of this, but nonetheless, it is between the house and the street, but it's not technically in the front setback area.
Does occupy some of the sewer easement in that particular location as well.
And is this the one at Ellsworth or Louise Lane in Ohio, John?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So, this just went up recently. Ohio is at the right-hand side of the photo. And again, not behind a fence. And then, of course, we have this. This is a double frontage lot, which is a different question. And then, I guess this one is at 903 Claflin. And I don't know, is it Side Street, Lewis, John?
Oh, let's see. Yeah, you were looking from Lewis to the east on that. This is an example of one where the height itself is pretty low in regards to the fence and lot.
Okay, then we go back to our... We had the ones from our previous case, but why don't you...
You had one that had two together? Oh, that was just another view of the...
Right. But the difference, the reason I tried to keep that out of the presentation is that they were of a size that required permits. And I personally issued a permit for them, because it wasn't in the front yard, and I didn't think that was a fair comparison, since it's not a front yard shed. Because that one was...
Least of all of them.
That one was of a size that required a permit, and so, it didn't seem fair to lump that in with these ones that did not require permit. But if you could go to the allowable location diagram, John? This is on the City of Salina's website, because when I was doing research, I found it on the Internet. And so, again, if you are in a... This is your conventional lot situation that most of us have, where you have a front, two sides, and a rear yard. And you can come in here. One thing I noticed, in a lot of communities that I looked at, this area right here is not a permissible location for a shed, that it has to be only in the rear yard area. This, if you reversed it, this would be the Denton's situation, where their shed is right located in this area on the non-addressed front yard. John, if you could go to the fence diagram, which I think is the next one. This, I think, is, has the potential to create some confusion, because under the ordinance, as it stands today, I couldn't put a gazebo, or a shelter, or a shed, or any type of structure like that out in this area. But the one thing I can put in this area is a solid wood fence, starting here and coming down to here. So, at least there's some argument to be made that, well, if I can put a fence there, and it can be solid, and it can be six feet tall, does it really matter what is behind the fence? If it's screened and if it's not overly tall? So, that is part of the argument. But the two things that we were asked to do was to collect some more photo examples, and then look at what other Kansas communities, at least on paper, allow or don't allow. And this got kind of depressing after a while, because kept coming up with the same answer. But we surveyed or looked at all these Kansas communities, and the thing that I took note of is you can't... Dustin worked in the City of Manhattan for a while. I asked him how big of a problem was there. He said he didn't know, and maybe they don't know. But in the City of Manhattan, you don't need a building permit for a shed. And some, in the new... Or the residential code that came out bumped that exemption, in some cases, up to 200 square feet. And I begged and whined and asked to keep ours at 120, because we were having enough trouble with that. But Overland Park, Manhattan, they're at 120. Topeka bumped theirs to 150. But if you're in the City of Manhattan, and you put up a shed that's 200 square feet or less, you don't need a permit. The two things I noted were that in some communities, like Newton, Paola, and even to agree, the City of Wichita, they don't have a blanket exemption from getting a permit. In Wichita, which apparently they identified this as a problem, they said, "You don't need to get a building permit, but you need to get a location permit for your shed," which would be essentially something along the lines of zoning permit or zoning approval, that you need to come in and you need to get the location of your shed approved in advance. But then, you don't need to get a building permit to put it up. And so, a lot of these places, like Lowe's or Sutherland's, or places like that, have ready-made buildings that you can just move in and set on your site. So, it would probably be prudent if you had a location permit or something, where the location could be reviewed and approved, and then you go out and place your building. The City of Bonner Springs, they require that you... That an inspector go out, and you have to flag the location of where you want to put the shed, and have that location approved, and then you can place your shed. So, that would seem to be a mechanism that could head that off. There were examples of communities we found in other states. Some, I said, were more restrictive. The City of Manhattan, in theory, you can't put one in your side yard. That applied to a number of cities on this list. But in no case could we find a city that allowed them in front yards on corner lots. And I'm assuming that the fact that Wichita has a location permit and Bonner Springs requires an inspection before placement would tend to tell me that not requiring a permit is not working so well. And so, those... That's what we found in terms of what you have on record as ordinances, how those are applied, what the enforcement is, how common front yard, corner lot sheds are in other communities. That's another matter. But at least a couple of communities have not exempted 120-foot sheds from permit requirements, and several others have said that even if you don't have to get a building permit, you do have to get a location permit. But again, I guess, John, if you could go back to some of those examples, maybe the one at 901 Millwood, which I think is either seven or eight. But this... You know, you asked for good and bad examples. I guess this would be an example, along with the Denton's case, or some others, where at least a question could be asked, "Well, if I can put a six-foot solid fence there, why can't I put something behind it?" And that's screened from view, as long as it's not overly tall. So, that gets back to our options. I noticed in just some of the reading that I had, even some of the things, like in Popular Mechanics, it says, "There's a great common misconception that building permits are required only for sheds larger than a certain size." This is simply not true. Well, it's... For the most part, it is true in most jurisdictions. And so, I'm not sure that there's even uniform agreement on that. But it is written right into the International Residential Code, the exemption for storage sheds under a certain size, and most communities simply adopt that code as written, and so that exemption is built into it. And it's been an exemption here for, ever since we've had building codes that I'm aware of. It's not a zoning code amendment, but you have the same situation with fences. We have rules on where you can put fences, where you can't, and how tall they can be. But we do not require permits for fences. So, I think we're... We've done some research and some follow-up. We've looked at other situations in the community, and so, really, the options are still back to modifying the ordinance to conform with what appear to be our community norms and practices, and isolate it that way, or leave it the way it is, in which case, we have a lot of enforcement action to do. And as I said, we're not in the business of selective enforcement. But we... You can judge for yourself, but we do have something that we look at at carports and garages, where we talk about compatibility with the home, and we look at things like color and exterior materials, and height, and roof pitch, and things like that. And you have to have some compatibility with the existing structure or other outbuildings in order to get a permit. So, we do look at appearance when it is a permit-related item. So, there are good and bad examples. I don't know what the height of this is, but it looks... That's a four-foot fence, so this building's probably not much over seven or eight feet tall. And if it was behind a solid wood fence, it might not be noticeable at all.
Dean, did you get a chance to go to Lowe's or anywhere and check the height of a prefab shed?
We did not. So, I don't know if it's...
We did.
Okay.
There were under 10 feet. There was a couple that was up to 12 feet, but they pretended to be a larger shed also that wouldn't fall under the...
120 square foot. Okay.
Dean, I guess I don't understand your reasoning for the statement. If I can put up a six-foot privacy fence, why can't I put up a shed on the other side? I mean, there's lots of things that people can't put up on the other side of a six-foot privacy fence.
Well, the arguments for not allowing sheds in the front yard between a house and the non-addressed property line, about keeping that space open and not blocking passage of air, and not having a cluttered appearance in that area between homes and streets. If you accept all those reasons, then you wouldn't allow fences in that area either. But the reason, historically, that the City of Salina has allowed that is because of the historical disadvantage. I guess, John, if you could go to the summary of the storage shed locations or corner lot fence diagram. The same reasoning, again, that we have corner lots in Salina, where this is a side yard, this is a side yard, and this is very shallow. And of course, the Denton's argument was that the way their lot was set up, that this area back here wasn't conducive to having a shed. A lot of our corner lots, the way they're set up, is that this area is tight, this area is tight, and this is one of the larger areas in terms of usable yards. So, if you don't allow people to fence this, then it becomes a waste of space in terms of usable yard, whether it's a play area, or a place for pets, or other things. And so, if the argument is that you don't want visual clutter out in this area, or you want to keep this open, having a solid six-foot fence there would seem to go against those same reasons. So, that's if... For us, if you have a shed that is of reasonable height, and it's screened and behind the fence, it shouldn't really have an impact visually or on your neighbors, or in terms of visual impairment or anything in the front yard, because it's already behind a fence or a hedge. And so, you've already lost the open... This is an open yard area, and this is already filled in. So, does this create a visual intrusion or clutter in that front yard if this is already there? I guess that's the point. And that's why we were pretty specific. We don't think that a storage shed standing out by itself without being behind some sort of fence is a good idea. But if the allowance is already there, I think this is more noticeable and has more of an impact than if you had a fence here enclosing all that. So, that's our reasoning on that.
Let me clarify now, though. No community you checked on allows a shed in the 25-foot setback, is that right?
In the way their ordinances are written, there is none that allow an accessory building or shed to be located in a front yard between a building and street. It is theoretically possible that some of them don't count that as a front yard, but in the ones that we saw, some of the others, they had to be at least 60 feet back from any street line, which would certainly preclude something like this, because this is not more than 60 feet back from this street line. Now, how those are applied or enforced, or whether they have the same problem and they don't know it, is another matter.
I mean, although currently is no, isn't it? I mean, we still have them, so I would guess all those other communities have similar issues.
I would imagine. And when I looked at... The one that particularly struck me was Wichita, where there... If you go and look, it says that you do not need a building permit if the shed you put up's 120 square feet or less, but you must obtain a location permit.
Right.
Again, because they want to make sure you don't put it in a sewer easement, or a front yard, or those type of things. So, that's a prospective answer.
Do these communities allow fences on those... On my... On those...
I did not... I could not tell on all of those, but it would be a... That would be a follow-up item that we could check. I did note that there were... The majority of these cities did not require permits for fences. They had rules for fences, but did not require fence permits. And our... We used to require fence permits, but we, one, didn't go out and inspect fences after they were put up, and, two, didn't really have the manpower to process and monitor all that. So, we've relied on public education and educating the fence contractors, and for the most part, fences are done well and in accordance with code here, but we occasionally have the stray six-foot fence that is where it shouldn't be.
Dean, can you tell me what the methodology would be if we were to pass something like this and allow them behind a fence? The people that had buildings then, that didn't have fences on the outside of them, would they be required to put up a fence then?
Or to relocate their sheds, which is... If you took this as the example, they would have the option of erecting a fence here that was a six-foot privacy fence, or taking this. And I don't know, John, we probably can't get an aerial photo of that, but I've seen this lot, and they have about eight feet from the back of the unit here, and about eight feet on the east. And if you live there, the only place that you could conceivably put a shed is here. The other thing I didn't look at, but we're consistent in some regards, is the fact that, you know, we have treated corner lots as having two side yards and two front yards, which means that, you know, a side yard, the minimum setback is seven and a half feet. And so, you literally do have some places like this, where if you have any kind of deck or anything on the back, you could have a backyard that's eight feet deep, or something like that, if you have a deck or patio in the back of your house. And so, there are corner lot situations in Salina, where the biggest yard area that they have is the non-addressed side of their house, because it had to be set back 25 feet from the street. And so, that 25-foot area turns out to be the biggest open space on their lot.
But not to seem harsh, but certainly, we know those things when we buy property. If it has a very narrow backyard, we sort of know that we're going to be limited in what we can do there. If it has a very narrow side yard, we know we're going to be limited. I mean, that's really not something you can control. Developers determine that when they plot the land. And, you know, I hate it, but that's unfortunate. If you live with an eight-foot backyard, you're probably not going to be able to put a 10-foot storage shed in there, are you?
Right. Some people can't. It certainly limits the size you can have in any event, and some people who want to have a detached garage, there's no chance of that.
If they're under 120 square feet, is there any building material regs, or can they put up anything? I mean, because now, we're looking at Rubbermaid makes a little shed that you snap together like a...
No, there is nothing that says it can't be sheet metal.
Have you seen them? What... Oh, yeah, they're little plastic sheds you buy at Sears. Sears has them, and you just slap them together.
Yeah. What are fall... And I don't know, John, did you find anything that was metal or anything of that?
It's not bad, but then you got those metals.
That...
In somebody's yard on a strip land.
There is this one off the corner of Ash and North Ohio.
Yeah, that's a metal shed, but it's pretty well painted in terms of matching up and everything. But you could conceivably have a sheet metal or a plastic shed. As they make... You're correct, they make those now, that could be four by six, or whatever. So, we don't have a material that it has to be made out of. And part of the reasoning for that is you don't need the same kind of foundation under a shed like that that you do for something that's larger. And that's part of the reason, is that on the larger sheds, the reason... Part of the reason for having a building permit requirement is to make sure that it's on an adequate footings or foundation, whereas some of these can just be put on skids. You know, if it's 10 by 12, you just slide it over and set it down.
So, getting at the heart of the issue, for me to try to figure out what I'm struggling with here is... I don't think we're so concerned about safety issues. What we're concerned about is aesthetics.
I think the purpose behind these communities not allowing them in front yards is about aesthetics.
Okay. So, if that... If we agree on that's why we're dealing with this issue, then I guess the next question is, do we agree that this is... Sheds located here is aesthetically unpleasing? Or what is it about sheds that are aesthetically unpleasing? And how do we deal with that? If we all agree they're unpleasant, then that's a decision. And my question about that is, so, walk us through what would happen if we resolved that, in fact, we are going to stand by our ordinances that are already in place, they're not allowed, then what's the next step?
And the next step is that we would have to go around and do an inventory and get a pretty good database of where all these are, prepare a form letter that would go out to all those folks, and then we'd be pretty busy following up on that. Or the BZA might be really busy. What's that?
Can you venture a price tag on that for the taxpayers? Wouldn't modification of the ordinance be a lot easier than...
Well, and my thinking is, how many people are going to look back and say, "When I bought this house, how comes all the zoning and stuff?" I mean, even though it says on a listing that all zoning may not be met, I mean, there's going to be a lot of people upset, say, "Well, I bought this, the shed was here, and now you're telling me..." You know, so, I agree with you, it could be more of a...
Yeah, my example there at 1103 McAdams, which I think was your slide five from the earlier presentation, John. But this one, it showed that this shed had been on the property since 1989.
It's been sold several times, yeah.
Sold several times. The people that bought it thought it was too close to the garage, so it was unskid, so they drug it out, and... so they drug it out, and I said, "Well, if that's been there since 1989, how come I'm just now seeing it?" Well, because we moved it over, over here. But the example would be, I've looked at this property, if, if this shed could not be here, and we sent them a letter and said, "You either need to remove it or relocate it," their only option would be to remove it because there's no place on this lot that you could relocate it to. There's, there's not even enough room behind this house to drag it around the house to the other side, and if you put it on that side, it would be too close to the neighbor on that side. So, I mean, so the, probably our concern about this is that it's, I don't know exactly how tall it is, but it seems like it's about 10 feet tall, and it's quite a bit more noticeable, even given the fact that it's behind the fence. But the example that Mr. Ryan gave, that if an ordinance was passed that said you can have sheds in your non-addressed front yard, and we'd probably not allow it to be right up to the fence, there'd probably be some minimum, just like you have on all your other yards, whether it was three or five feet, but that this could remain because it's behind a six-foot privacy fence in the non-addressed side. The alternative is, this is a violation, and it has to be relocated or removed, and...
But Dean, that particular property there, that particular property owner, I believe, chose to build a big detached garage, which took up the space on the side of the house where the storage shed could or may have been at one time. That's one issue. The other issue is, there is a bit of a perception in this town, "Don't worry about what the regulations, the zoning, or the codes are, just do it, and the city won't make you change it." And I don't like that perception. I mean, I think we all have a responsibility to follow the codes and follow the zoning requirements because what we do as individuals either enhances or detracts from the community. And I'm not for changing this particular ordinance just because a few people didn't particularly pay attention to what's required and chose to do whatever they wanted to do. I mean, and I feel sorry that they might have to move them, but if we change this ordinance entirely, then what's the next one? Can we, now I'm going to ask you a question. If we change this, can we start building garages in the side yard? Or what would be the front yard on the corner lot? Can we start building garages? Could they put a garage there? As long as it's not over 10 foot tall, as long as it's screened?
No.
Well, we say no, but that'll be the next thing.
Well, they could apply for variance, but the answer would still probably be no.
So, why would it be no for that, and it's just for these storage sheds?
I can appreciate what Ken's saying. I think the 120-square-foot change is quite a bit between a garage and a small shed. I, and I agree with what Sidney was saying, too. I think it's an aesthetics issue, more of a safety issue. Personally, all the pictures I've seen of the one behind the privacy fence, I don't mind. I'm a little shocked that Northern Kansas community allows them. I'm not so sure that they are opposed to them, or if they're not just in a similar boat that we are, that it's sort of just there, and most people don't take note of it, and the ordinance, maybe when it was written 50 years ago, they just said, "Okay, we don't want them in the side yard," and then nobody really paid attention.
They don't have the Dentons in their town.
That's right. They don't have the nice, they don't have the nice Denton property in theirs.
The other thing, too, is I don't think that that's clearly defined, though, where the side yard is, though.
In some of those communities, yeah.
In some of those communities, according to that chart, is that right?
It's not clear. I mean, we, by definition, if the area between the front of the house and a street is a front yard. There are different communities that use different terminology for nomenclature on that, but, you know, ones like the City of Manhattan, it doesn't matter because they have an ordinance that says no shed can be within 60 feet of a lot line that abuts a street. So, that clearly rules anything like this out. Now, could I drive in the City of Manhattan and find something like that? Maybe.
Surely could.
And I've got, I've got a court case from the City of Topeka. Theirs, instead of 60 feet, theirs is 30 feet, but it says no storage shed or accessory building can be within 30 feet of a street property line. So, they, they may not use exactly the same terminology, but you can tell from those cases, and that, that was a case where the City of Topeka was prosecuting people who had this situation.
Dean, I think we'd all agree, once you start trying to figure out aesthetics, you've got a lot of people, I think blue is pretty, and somebody else thinks blue is ugly, that you're, you're, you'll never, you'll never finally get to a point of what's aesthetically pleasing. Two points, the one on South Ohio that you mentioned, where that shed is out on the side, on the front yard, excuse me, and there's no room behind. If you, if you remember that property, if anybody drives by there, before they put that shed up and redid that little porch deck dam, that was a disaster. All the kids' toys were all over the side of the house, bikes and everything else, and it looked like, you know what, it was not aesthetically pleasing.
All this, all this work's been done during this year.
They put that shed up with shingles. I get the point about where it is, but, I mean, that looks a lot better than it did from that standpoint. Second point is, I think I have a relative who put up a metal shed, I know I have a relative who put up a metal shed, in a location that I believe is under code because it's, because of the way the lot is, but I can tell you, it's not aesthetically pleasing. And it's visible on that side, but it is behind, it's not out, I think it conforms with code, and yet it's just as visible or more visible than that, and it's, it's an old beat-up metal shed that's, needs to be removed.
Which I think was like what you were talking about with the Dentons lot, they could actually move it to what, like, almost like the front yard, and it would look horrendous, where they could actually literally put it.
And yet, they've put a lot of time and effort into it.
Right. I mean, there are situations where if, if somebody's house is set back 50 feet from the street, and they put an outbuilding or garage between their house and the street, but it's still behind the 25-foot building line, then it's not in a front yard, although it is between the house and the street, and most people would say, "Well, that's not very aesthetically pleasing to have a outbuilding between the front entrance of the house and the street."
Yeah, I think I would rather rewrite an ordinance that said no building of anything in front of the house line, more so than the, I'm, I'm less concerned about the side yard as I would be what he was saying and what theoretically the Dentons could do. I'd be more concerned about a outbuilding in front of your house than to the side, especially proper screening, sorry.
I'm, I'm willing to say that, yes, this is an aesthetic issue, but there are some ways that we can permit sheds in this area, but it's not everything and anything goes. I don't think any of us want to see that.
I agree.
But how are you going to control that? We don't even control now what we have an ordinance against. How will you control that?
Well, I think, I think we also need to have a location permit, because I think the whole shed thing is just going to get crazier and crazier, really. They're getting bigger and bigger, and pretty soon, we're going to have sheds in the backyard in the right areas, but they're going to creep up in size, and people are going to say, "Oh." And, and they're going to mean it. I didn't know I had to have, you know, all those...
Yeah, maybe if nothing else, maybe we're just looking at a revision, so maybe if we stick to our 120-foot screening, not in front of the property line, if we, if we sort of draft a new ordinance, I, I think what we're really looking at is our ordinance is just kind of inadequate, given the trends, and if we're maybe just, or if all we're doing now is just updating it, it kind of answers a little bit of what Ken says, and that is, people, we don't want them just running, and what, kind of what you're saying, too, we don't want them running rampant, but if we have a new, up-to-date, we can say, "Look, we just voted on this a year ago, these are the rules, if somebody builds it, then let's, let's be punitive after them."
But I do think we need to be willing to go back in and say to those that don't conform to whatever we decide now, because they certainly didn't conform before.
Sure.
Is if you want this shed to remain here, then this is what has to happen.
I would agree with that.
I'm convinced that the, no matter, even if you took no action, the problem would perpetuate if we didn't get a location permit or something of some kind, so that we could advise people.
You mentioned, you mentioned that one of the municipalities had a line across the back, and that was the de facto backyard. I think that we need a line across the front, like, like what Commissioner Householder was talking about, that nothing gets put in front of that.
Regardless of where the setback line is, that, between the actual building line of the house.
To me, that's aesthetically, could you go back to the picture before this one, John? And I'm sorry, I can't tell you the number of the location. No, it was one where the, there was a...
Well, except right here, I think this is an example of an attractive shed, but it's not attractive in that place. Either it has to be a privacy fence, and I think if it's going to be that tall, then it has to fall under some other criteria. The roof line needs to be the same, the paint color needs to be the same.
I agree. And, and to me, the fence is a must-have. Every, every one of the examples that we've seen, the ones that have open fences are unattractive, and the ones that have solid fences are acceptable.
Yes, I'm sorry about going back to the others.
More acceptable. John, if you could do the one, I think it was a blue house, and the fence ran parallel, or adjacent to the front line of the, the building, and the shed was off on the left. You'll just have to flip the...
The one on Claflin, John? Not, maybe the last...
No.
Not that attractive.
903 Claflin, 16.
Nope. One more. There you go, that one right there. And, you know, for me, that's a, that's a good example, the fence is, even with the front line of the house, and, and that side yard is pretty much a backyard to me. You know, you can call it whatever you want, but that, that's what it amounts to being. And for me, that would be probably the height maximum that I would be comfortable with.
Yes, but this is an example of it is taller, but the roof line matches, and the paint color matches, and so it's not as visually distracting to me, but I think it really impinges on the height issue. So, to me, if it's going to be above eight foot, or whatever we decide, then it, there are more issues that come into play.
I would, I would agree with that.
So, maybe put some restrictions as far as that 120-foot, also a height as well, which maybe there already is some heights restrictions in there, and then if it goes above that, then that becomes a variance-type issue, you know, if they want to make the roof 12 feet tall. And I know, you were saying your roof's a little higher at the angle...
It's about nine.
It's about nine or so.
Theirs is a two-story house, is it not? Or is it a single-story house?
You know, and maybe we could even ride it up that way, too. I mean, exactly.
Well, and the roof line matches the roof line of their house.
Yeah, see, that looks, that is their house, but they got a two-story house, and an eight, 12-foot building was a lot different against a two-story house.
John, could you go to that picture of the, that I sent, that I emailed to you?
I wish they could make an ordinance saying it has to be wood.
There, there's a, there's a 10 by 12 shed that's, that's really tall.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Who lives in the second story?
Well, there's three sheds in that backyard, too, by the way, but, so...
Well, are you counting the cars as a shed? Is that a standard unit?
Be careful, this is...
How would you like to have, be the neighbor to the...
Well, yeah, that's, that is, so is that considered a shed?
I believe so, isn't that right, John? That's considered a shed?
What is that, what is that called?
Although it didn't receive a building permit, it was put up, and it is roughly 10 by 12, but it's also two stories tall, which really increases the impact of that.
It might be a children's playhouse, also.
Is, is, is there currently a height restriction, Dean?
The height restriction now is 16 feet, but that's on any type of short storage shed, so the maximum size workshop or storage shed you can build is, is 360 square feet, and if you do that, it can't be taller than the house, but it can never be more than 16 feet.
I'm sorry, I mean, on the, on the non-coded ones, the 120-square-foot, is there a...
There is no height limit on those.
Okay, so then we could theoretically...
This is not over 16 feet tall, so that's the only limit that we have.
But let's say this guy was...
But if you wanted to put a height limit on the 120-square-foot or less, or the ones that were...
I think we should.
Then you could.
I would say eight foot.
And I would say two-story might make a bit of a difference. I'm not, I mean, maybe not because of the fence issue, but let's say another foot.
That's where I'm at, is the eight foot just puts a two foot over a fence.
And that, maybe that's, maybe that's a good limit.
And you're, and you're, I mean, I don't think we can stop them.
But we don't want to see that.
We don't want to see that.
Yeah.
That's why the eight foot, if it's two foot above a fence, and you have a couple trees, it's at least not as intrusive as something like that.
So, if we establish requirements concerning the roof line, the appearance, the height, are then we going to establish that there's a permit required for storage sheds, is what we're saying? Is that right?
I think there has to be a location permit, because I think sheds, even in the backyard, are going to become a real issue.
But without a building permit, you can't control the things we've been talking about. A location permit still doesn't control that type of thing from having...
So, because they don't have to give your, their plans, if it's a location?
Stake in the ground, where it's going to be.
And Dean, are we really going to overwork your department? I mean, seriously. I mean, we have to look at the real practical applications here, too. I mean, we don't, be afraid to tell us yes.
I don't think that, that making people come in and get a location permit and making them ask the questions, so they, because it's not just this issue, the, the example, and I guess if you go back to the Marymount example, John, that, that's, that's a good one, because that one has consumed large amounts of staff time, but there's a, let's see which one that is, John, it's...
That was one that was legally allowed.
Glenn and Marymount, I think.
Eleven or 12?
Yeah.
Right there.
Okay. This here is a sanitary sewer lift station. I think the station itself is something on the order of 25 feet deep, serves a large area. It was put in in 1957, so it's maybe due for some maintenance or overhaul. This, as it stands right here, is, which was put there by mistake, but it is inside an easement that is there to allow for safe excavation to get at the 25-foot-deep pump station. You don't want people putting sheds up that are going to get damaged or inconvenienced by maintain, and it doesn't matter if it's gas line, sewer line, electric lines, all those kind of things, you don't want people putting sheds in locations that are going to interfere with that. So, the location permit is, is there to head off problems.
And if we also did a, something that limited building behind the, the front fascia of the building, those sheds, neither one of them, would we be in the right place, and is that correct?
Well, the, the exception, this is a triple-frontage lot, so it, it has, but the, the thing that you have to look at when you're looking at corner lots is you also have to look at the situations, which we're seeing, we saw with Stone Lake that you reviewed recently, we have with Eastview Estates, which is on, backs up to Magnolia Road, east of Ohio, the additions there, Quail Meadows, Schilling Road. You get the situations, the, the ordinance does allow somebody whose front yard faces a side street, their backyard faces Schilling Road. It allows them to declare, even though that's a street, it allows them to declare that as their backyard for shed or setback purposes. So, if you drive down Schilling Road towards Target or that direction, you will see people who, in their backyards, which abuts Schilling Road, will have sheds or buildings back in the 25-foot setback area, because, again, you've, you've created a situation of the double-frontage lot, and you don't want to completely penalize people by taking away any location or opportunity they have to have a place for an outbuilding. So, the, the difference is, this lot has Ruskin, Marymount, and Glenn frontage, so it actually has three front yards, but you do have the situation where the code already allows somebody who backs up to Magnolia, or backs up to Schilling, to have the, the yard that backs up to that be considered their backyard for outbuilding purposes.
It still required the 25-foot setback, is that right? Are those buildings 25... It still required the 25-foot setback, is that right? Are those buildings 25-foot back?
These buildings are 25-foot back because this fence is about almost 20 feet in from their property line. Their, their property line is, is way out here. And it just looks like it's close because of where the fence is, but that's not, those, they are, they stick out in front of the building line of the house, but they are not in the front yard. That's not their issue. Their issue is they're in, this building is inside a sanitary sewer easement, and this building will be moving soon, and this will be moving soon.
On the, on the photo of the South Ohio with the little white shed.
Yes.
Is it our feeling then that, how far do we think that the fence needs to extend? Does it need to come all the way to the front? I don't know.
Are you thinking like four or six foot past the shed or something?
Trying to, we're trying to hide a shed with a fence, and I'm going to share with you, I'm not convinced that those fences are necessarily attractive by themselves. They're, they're necessary, they're allowed, and I understand that, but frankly, the fences don't enhance a property that much, in my opinion.
Well.
I mean, but they're allowed, and I'm not arguing the fact that they could be there. But just to hide a shed with a fence like that doesn't make a lot of sense to me either, because you're not really improving the overall appearance.
I, I think it does cut down on the, kind of the visual. This happens to be a nice shed, but you just don't know what's going to be stacked up around it, in front of it, you know? At least with the fence, you have some, because that property is visual from, visible from both sides, and they're two front yards, and you wouldn't put it in another front yard, but we'd allow it in this front yard. So I think a fence does help, but I, I'm not sure how much of a fence helps. I mean, it's, I would suggest that maybe you write a, a sample ordinance for us, taking into consideration the many things that we've said, and just float it, so that at least we have something to say.
Well, is, is there a general consensus that we all, all agree that, that solid fences are, are necessity?
I would say necessity.
Yes, I agree.
Gentlemen?
I'm not necessarily agree with that, but I'm not entirely against it.
Okay. And then, uh, what about height? We've talked about eight foot, we've talked about 10 foot. What is, is, is eight foot, is everybody, what's your thoughts there?
I think nine's a good compromise.
I think nine's a good compromise.
Because I said eight, that's why, right?
Right, yeah.
And, and you said the ones that were at Lowe's were.
Let me talk about eight foot. That isn't very high.
He, he needs to come to the.
Come, come to the podium, state your name, we'll go through the motions.
Hi, I'm Jeff Denton. Eight foot isn't very high in a six-foot fence. It's only two foot above that. But if you have a doorway, the doorway is prob, what are doorways?
Seven.
Six, eight.
Six, eight. Well, that's just a little bit more than, than, uh, eight foot is just a little bit more than that. So I'd say eight should be a minimum. I would think nine or 10 would be ideal.
What's the height to the front of your building?
The, the siding on the front is eight foot.
So where that door is.
And, and then there's the upper part, which is about six inches.
So from the, from that concrete or whatever that walkway is going into your building to the roof, very top of the roof?
It's about, uh, it's a little less than nine.
Okay.
But it's also set up on piers, uh, a couple inches above the ground. So if that, if it needs to be, uh, you know, a certain height, I can just build the ground up around it.
Glenn, so I have a question, too, with your, your particular building. It appears that there's a rear overhang to the roof, and it's over the fence. Is that correct or not?
Yeah, it's just a couple inches.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's not. And that's, I think that's the, so the water will go over the fence.
So the back of your shed's about six and a half, seven foot, and the front's about a little over eight?
Yeah, yeah. And we designed it. The reason it's that way is it's the same pitch as our roof line.
Right, I understand that.
You have a single-pitch roof, then? You don't have, you don't have a gable roof, you have a single-pitch roof?
Yeah.
Thank you. So again, I'm, I'm just trying to build consensus over our, the things that we've talked about. So, so back to the height issue. We've talked about anything over eight foot having some type of, of architectural plan submitted, and that it conformed largely to what the house is. What's your thoughts on that?
If it's going to be over eight foot. It's going to be over eight foot, yeah, I can see that.
Well, Dean, it looks like you've got.
You've got more work.
Yeah, some direction there.
I guess we had one other. I, I was just reading this example here. It says, "Free-standing accessory structures shall not be located in the front of the principal structure or within a required front yard." And if I heard some of you, you were interested in covering both of those bases to say, in other words, this covers both those bases by saying that even if the house is set back 32 feet and the front yard's at 25, that a free-standing accessory building shall not be located in front of the principal structure, meaning.
And, and addressed side, so we don't just double down what we're working on right now, make sure we, we list that as addressed side.
And then something about a location permit for all sheds.
And we know 90% aren't going to come in, but at least maybe we have some, to, to help Ken, at least we have some enforcement in that way. We've rewritten it, we've, we've, you know, I don't even know if we could even, in a sense of public service announcements, hang, you know, get the, the local, you know, Lowe's or Sutherland's or Menards or whoever's coming to town or already here, you know, a thing that just says, you know, be aware as of this date, you know, you need to get a location permit, you know?
He sends out in their utility bills all the time.
Yeah, I've never, I don't think I've ever read anything that's been in my utility bill, though.
It's not really hard to communicate with the.
Well, I, I agree, I agree. I agree, we could do that, too? We could do that, too?
There's some similarities here to swimming pools. You can go out and buy a above-ground pool or pool kit, and if you do so, you've got to put your pool behind a fence that's a certain height and have lockable gates and all of that, and so we try to get brochures and information out to the people that sell pools, and we've tried to get that out to the people who sell the kit or the.
Buildings as well.
Ready-to-go buildings.
I mean, we don't want to burden the, the city on this stuff, but I mean, I think a little enforcement will maybe curb some of this.
Our, our main concern has been that the, like you said, if, if the, the Dentons and people like them shouldn't be punished for coming forward and trying to make their construction conforming by applying for a variance, and the fact that their variance was not approved shouldn't disadvantage them compared to the people who didn't bother to apply at all, so.
And just think, look how progressive we are. We're the one community in town that's going to allow this. Literally, tens of people will move to town because of this ordinance change.
Well, next, next time Dustin's in Manhattan, he's going to have to report back to me on, on what he sees in the way of sheds there.
All of those Manhattan people who have been denied will now move to Salina, thereby relocating, growing our city, and we don't even have to spend $74 million to do it.
The, the chair recognizes Mr. Denton.
Yes, I, we went out to Lowe's and measured buildings. There was 12 of them that we considered. Seven of the 12 were over eight foot. Three of the 12 were over 10 foot. So most of them were between eight and 10 feet. As a matter of reference.
So, yeah, if we're thinking that nine might be a good.
In my mind, your shed correlates with what I see as aesthetic. If, if it's going to be that height, you have the exterior the same as your house, you have the roof line the same. Only thing about yours that I would draw an exception is that portion that's hanging over the fence. That, you know, I, I don't think that should, should be allowed, but that to me can, can be allowed, but eight foot, if you're just doing some kind of a metal shed that otherwise it just. Yeah.
Thank you.
Make another observation. We drove around quite a bit looking at sheds, and the last meeting we talked, like, maybe there was 200 in, in the city of Salina. I think that is a way low number.
I would agree.
I think there's four, 500. The other observation that I made looking at sheds is there were some pretty bad-looking sheds. But all the bad ones, I think, had been there 25 years. The new ones look like this. And I, I'm not sure what you're going to do with a 25-year-old bad-looking shed.
Hope it burns.
Probably use our soon-to-be-adapted property maintenance code and address it that way.
Dean, as a suggestion, Dean, I, I believe if I've read them correctly, the building code requirements for a building permit for a detached garage are pretty clear on the aesthetics, about how it needs to look, the roof line, the match.
Yes.
That would be a basis to start for these storage sheds.
Yes, to, to use the same, the same format. We, we.
Dean, you understand.
We have that, and so that, that was primarily done at the direction of the planning commission, and the concern was, we've had, you know, a couple. What, what we went to was we used to have a sliding scale for garages. The bigger the lot, the bigger garage you could have. That, what we did was we just put a cap that says 24 by 32 is the largest that you can build, and if you want to go larger than that, then you have to apply for a variance, and as, as part of that, any garage that you build has to be compatible with the dwelling. And so that's something that when the Board of Zoning Appeals looks at garages, and I can tell you, and Mrs. Soderberg can tell you, that the Board of Zoning Appeals does not approve every oversized garage, and you know, the, the reason for that was, we had one in particular that I can remember that had, um, 14-foot sidewalls and a, a 16-foot door, because the owner was parking a semi cab in there and, and wanted the clearance. Well, the neighbors didn't appreciate it very much, because it wasn't very compatible, and so the, the idea behind that is that through the variance process, neighbors are notified ahead of time and have an opportunity to comment or object, whereas before, they could only complain after it was built. So we have, we've introduced that part, and the, the appearance of the compatibility of garages is, is, I think, better now than it was before, and you'd take those same principles and extend it here, particularly if you had the higher sheds.
Do we, do we want to put a maximum height on this?
I thought we could.
My guess is a majority of the sheds out there are, are, people are putting up the prefab things at Lowe's and Sutherland's, maybe ought to consult with them and find out what's kind of standard. To me, an eight, a 10 by 12 shed's going to have a a, a same-pitched roof, and that's going to come up with a certain height on it, and that seems to me, that's going to be between nine and 10.
Except that's, that's tall.
That's 12 foot.
Depending on the width, and it's going to have 40% grade, it's going to come out someplace over nine or 10, so.
Yeah.
We don't want to be too short, and, but we don't want to be too tall.
Yeah.
Pass somebody.
We don't exclude anything that's available in, under that 120 square foot.
Yeah, and we don't want to limit sidewalls and say six-foot sidewalls, because we'll be doing just this.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I thought the eight foot was.
For the prefabs.
That, that didn't, um, trigger the.
Aesthetics.
The aesthetics, and then I think between, the question is, between eight and what, 10 or 12?
Maybe 10.
10?
I think 12's getting pretty high.
I do, too.
Do you, do you remember the, Mr. Denton, do you remember the maximum height? You don't need to come to the podium, we'll take you.
The maximum height?
It's 12, probably.
11, 1 and 5 acres.
Well, and those they can put in the backyard, but I think for front yard setbacks, the maximum height should be 10 foot.
Excellent point, excellent point.
I agree.
That one may also have been over 120 feet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're talking side yards, you're right.
So, yeah. I, I agree. I, I think, I think Sidney brings up a good point, and that's we're kind of getting confused with the overall
Right.
plan. I think, yeah, bringing it back into focus that these side yards will say eight-foot, non-aesthetic
10 foot.
standards, anything above eight to 10 needs to be like the Dentons or some of these others where they, they match the house. I think that's a great point.
Yep, very good. Okay.
Yes, and there, there's certainly all kinds of options out there, but probably the, one of the least favorites you would have, the, I think the city of Paola says that you, if you have a lot of 10,000 square feet, you can have 120-square-foot shed. If you want to build bigger than that, you can only do that with the approval of the planning commission. Or, uh, planning commission has to review all other sheds over 240 square feet. I don't, I don't think you want to. I don't think you want to get in that, in that business, so.
With, with that.
But that, that gives us some direction to look at, and then when all of you are traveling, your homework is to look at these
Yeah.
cities and see if their results match up with their ordinances say on paper, because if, if you believe these, the way these ordinances are written, why there's no sheds in any front yard in any of these communities, so.
All right, thank you. Okay, item number three, comprehensive plan implementation items.
You got the really lengthy, lengthy, uh, list that's in the front part of the report, but I'm going to refer to the, the back part, which I think starts on page eight of your staff report there. And what we attempted to do, starting on page eight, was boil the list down and look at it from staff's perspective of, of taking that apart and looking at it logically, and wanted to see if you, as a commission, agreed with identifying these particular things, and as, as a priority, we've, there's been a lot of discussion about the urban service area, and the urban service area is the area that's outside the city of limits currently, but is an area that's of importance to Salina for its future growth, and the, uh, well, John, I guess if you could get to page eight, that would be better, because you'd be tracking with me. You just have to keep, keep scrolling until you get past all the lengthy numbers. I think there's something like 84. Let's see, how many numbered items? I guess there's 65 numbered items. So right here, John, is where we're at, and the, Celine County has adopted, but they have agreed to adopt the definition of what we view as our urban service area has been agreed to by Celine County. Uh, for better or worse, they chose not to adopt a future land use map, which seems to be very questionable how useful a plan is if it doesn't have a future land use map to help commissions guide, um, decisions about future zoning, but what they agreed to was whatever we come up with for land uses in that urban service area, they will agree to. So I guess that's good enough for us, because if, if you're out at the Ottawa County border, the city of Salina doesn't necessarily care about what the land use is there, but if you're on Holmes Road, the city does, and whatever the city comes up with for future land use is what the county will adhere to. We're trying to work with the county to get them to basically develop a new residential zoning classification that will limit, so you don't have three, five-acre lot or 10-acre lot subdivisions on the periphery of the east side of Salina, that you have septics and well systems and things that you have to work through. As the city works its way east, it's better if that stays as farmland or very limited isolated dwellings on 20 acres. We do need to work with them to get minimum infrastructure requirements for things like sewer, water, fire. sewer, water, fire protection. We do have places like Phillips Lighting and other places like that in the south industrial area that are outside the city limits, and the county doesn't really have any minimum requirements for fire protection or water, sewer, for those kind of uses, and it makes for a difficult situation when you have what's really city-type development, but it's developed outside the city limits. We are looking at zoning, at building codes, all those things, for things in the downtown area, or the older areas, to make sure that we don't have codes that make it too difficult to mix commercial and industrial together. We've done some creative things to get the loft apartments that we have downtown to work, because if you took the modern building codes and strictly applied them to that type of older construction, you'd never have it lofts downtown, because they wouldn't be able to meet the current code models. That was also done in the case of the Stiefel Theater and the Pioneer President's Place, looking at codes that more fit those historical buildings. So, that is something that's being worked on. One of the concepts in the plan was the new urban residential district, which would be a mixed density, try to promote different types of neighborhood patterns, but more residential density around the downtown, and also mix in some commercial. I think, if you visualize the River Master Plan in that area that's over there by the Salina Journal with Mulberry and Third and Streets over there, that would be a good candidate for what you would consider urban, new-style urban residential housing that would be close to downtown, tie in with the river plan, and create an urban neighborhood in that location. The community center, we talked about the last meeting, which would be focusing on some overlay standards, particularly for the Broadway corridor, the new neighborhood center, with areas identified, where areas like where Ninth and Cloud is, Shilling and Ohio, Marymount and Crawford, Homes and Crawford, areas like that where you want to have a neighborhood-scale commercial and have, allow for educational and public uses there. We talked about a point system for evaluating development proposals. We attached, at the very back of your packet there, an example of how that was used in the city in Texas. What that would require you to do is to come up with the things that you think are important for a project. It could be sidewalks, it could be landscaping, it could be use of particular types of building materials. And so, you have a new project that comes in at Broadway and Crawford, and you say, "Well, in order to get a permit to develop there, you need to achieve 25 points," and you can get that by doing sidewalks, you can do that with enhanced landscaping, you can do that with using brick or stone facades. You, as a commission, would have to decide what you want to promote or favor, and then, in order to go in and redevelop in that corridor, you can pick your points, but if I were looking at a good example, the new Verizon building there at Ninth and Magnolia is a good example. They built a new sidewalk on Magnolia where there wasn't one, they've got enhanced landscaping that wasn't there before, they moved their curb cut as far away from Ninth Street as you could, and put the parking on the east. They did a number of things there that if we were looking at a point system, it's an attractive building, so, that's the type of thing you need to look at and say, "What do I like about this project? I like that it has a sidewalk, I like that it has landscaping, I like the materials, the building." And so, if a point system were used, then it would be up to you to decide what you want to reward. We talked about a public use zoning district for things like our school facilities and things like fire stations, libraries, things of that nature. These other items, the planned industrial, we think are lesser priorities. You would want to give any thought to what is generally meant by a pedestrian-oriented commercial district, is that you would allow what you see, say, on South Santa Fe, where Pizza Hut and the fire station is, where you have buildings right up to the street, like you have in the downtown area, and then maybe parking in behind, if you want to create a district that allows that form of commercial, but in a new construction format. And then, the plan, we have a North Ohio gateway. The plan refers to expanding that. We'd need to know where those boundaries would be. The South Ninth Corridor stops south of Shilling Road and goes south of Waterwell. If that were extended north, then we'd need some input on where those boundaries would be. The next item deals with just looking at, right now, we require detention if you're doing a new subdivision, or if you're in a critical drainage area, but if you're outside those areas, you don't have to do detention for new development, and we would look at that and review with you whether there's other types of projects that maybe you think that detention would be warranted. The next item deals with subdivisions that have streams or areas going through them, that a stream buffer means no storage buildings, garages, outbuildings, things like that, within so many feet of a stream, and that's to try to keep both minimize flood damage, but also keep a vegetative buffer strip along the streams. The next item has been looked at before and rejected, but it has been, come up in other communities, and it's a, when you create a stormwater utility charge, it's like your water bill or your sewer bill, except it's based on how much parking lot you have, or how much rooftop you have, and then that water goes, or that goes into a fund for storm sewer improvements. That was introduced into the plan to at least look at again. Complete streets is looking at sidewalks, bike paths, bus stops, all those, when a new street is looked at, and getting a design that everybody agrees on. And then, the, we don't really have, we've talked about it on things like Stone Lake, we don't have any specific spacing patterns for intersections or driveways on a busy street like Ohio, or Crawford, or Ninth, and that's probably needed. And then, there's a lot of discussion in the plan about linear parks and making sure neighborhoods are connected to a citywide system. Our comment as a staff is, if we're gonna do that, we need to have a plan that shows where those are gonna be, because you can't sit here and tell a developer, "Well, you need to provide a park area over here so you can link up with what?" If you don't have a plan that says, "This is where we want to connect parks together." So, if you agree with that, then that would be something that would be a priority. The way that we were interpreting our previous discussions, the plan has a recommendation item in there that says, "Downzone properties to accommodate urban residential development where commercial is no longer appropriate within the Broadway corridor." In our discussions that we had with you, we interpreted that you didn't really support the idea of going in and downzoning those properties. The other item on page 11 deals with the discussions we had about conservation zoning district, and the way the plan was drafted, it used the term prohibit, which would mean absolutely nothing was allowed, and your view of that was that the discouraging was a better word than prohibiting, in that we had some discussions about some exceptions for when you'd be allowed to develop if I wasn't in a flood way. So, and then, the last item there, to, from planning staff's perspective, one of the things that, a lot of these statements and examples are embedded in the plan itself, but it would seem to us it'd be helpful if the plan document had a section separated out that said, "These are the land use policies for the city of Salina for carrying out the plan." And we just listed three there that are in our current comprehensive plan that are pretty important and have been relied on heavily, and one of those is the policy that annexations required before utilities and services are provided to any site. If you go out and choose a remote area, and my example would be at the time that Highland Meadows Hamlet was done in 1995, it was considered to be out there by itself, and they had to finance all their improvements privately, because the city said, "You can develop, but we're not gonna provide special assessment financing for that." And so, that was a policy that says, "If you want to jump out there that's out, not contiguous, and not an area where we've planned extensions, you can do that, but you're on your own." And then, the third item there is in the current plan that says, "When we're looking at new public buildings or community facilities, we should look first to downtown to reinforce it as a civic center of the community." So, I guess what we're, what we tried to do is take that big lengthy implementation matrix, pull things out, and say, from a cooperative planning standpoint, looking at changes to the zoning and other codes, looking at things like the park system, these are the things that we pulled out as priorities to be working on post-implementation, or post-adoption and implementation of the plan, and so, I guess we'd see if you were in agreement with those things that we had pulled out, particularly on pages eight through 11 there, and if there was anything that you thought was very important that we just flat missed.
You know the statement about the annexation about Hamlet Meadows?
Uh-huh.
If the city had done the improvements, or whatever that helped the park, the streets out there aren't like city streets.
They are private streets, but out there, they do have public water and sewer lines. But it was their choice to do private streets. They could have done public streets, but they didn't wish to at the time, but...
And then, the drain tube issue where the people's house flooded, would the city have done something bigger, or would they have maintained that same?
If that was a public street and a public drainage system, we might have looked at that differently. But the one thing you'll notice there between Phase One and Phase Two is that, in Phase One, we had all kinds of issues with the rural section of the private road and the roadside ditches, and in the second phase, they put in curb and gutter on the streets. Those are still private streets, but they're built differently because of some of the issues with the roadside ditches in the Phase One. But, the real question there is, to a degree, when you use the special assessments or the benefit district, to a degree, the city and city taxpayers are somewhat subsidizing or financing the infrastructure there, and the choice was made under the current plan not to do that if it was out in a location that wasn't really contiguous to the city. And so, those are illustrations, but I guess where we see policies are important is that you have a case that's in front of you that you're needing to vote or make a decision on, and we have the plan, and we have a number of things, but we can also pull out and say, "These are the city's land use and development policies, and that's, this is how they would apply in this case." And there's not really a section in the plan that pulls those together, that identifies those as policies to help guide decisions. So, we think that pulling that out and making a separate one that you can refer to when you're making decisions would be helpful.
Anything anybody'd like to add to that?
So, what we heard at the previous meetings was, you're not real keen on downzoning, that you like incentives better, that you think the overlay districts are a good concept, and you think Broadway's the place to start, and then, we need to follow up and finish up the public use districts and the neighborhood center districts, and get those adopted sooner, not later.
Right on.
There's, yeah, there was an interest to, before the city commission took their final step, to get a communication from where the planning commission was, that you had seen and reviewed these, and I think we've done it pretty thoroughly, and we've tried to tear the implementation matrix apart a little bit and try to reorganize it, so it's a little easier to prioritize.
Dean, I guess kind of on other matters, skipping away from this, earlier you'd mentioned that maintenance, citywide maintenance, and we discussed that in the Heritage Commission. Had that come before the planning commission at all, maybe the meeting I'd missed, or...
No, it hasn't, but I think it will be introduced to you in some format, probably in September, and what it is, is the city has a minimum housing code that deals with the minimum things that a dwelling has to have in order to be habitable, in terms of light, air, hooked up to utilities, bedrooms have to have windows and natural light, you need so many square feet of floor area for people there. We've had debates about, can you have a dwelling unit that doesn't have kitchen and cooking facilities, and the answer is currently no. And then, it goes a little bit farther into general maintenance things, and goes beyond just the internal to some of the external property things, but the idea is that it would replace and also supplement the minimum housing code. And so, we brought it to the Heritage Commission first, because the idea for having that actually originated with the Heritage Commission, because of the issues, say, "Well, we've got this nice historic district, and we got one property inside the district that's dragging everything down. What are the tools that we have to deal with that one property that somebody just won't maintain?" And so, we do plan to bring that in front of the planning commission as well, but it started with the Heritage Commission, because to look at how that relates in our historic As far as updates and other matters, we have an application from Emmanuel Four Square Church to rezone their property from residential to commercial there on East Cloud, and then, we have a request to adjust a planned development district that's for the soil conservation offices there on Broadway. There's some areas where parking plans were approved that weren't built and would never be built, and the desire is to have that revert back to residential yard area. And then, I know that, I've seen preliminary drawings for the Marymount-Crawford corner, but that will either come back at your September 7 meeting or the 21st. And we're not, we're not exactly sure, the Smoky Hill River Renewal Master Plan was accepted by the city commission... was accepted by the city commission, but there may be a stage, maybe post-election, because it seemed to be the consensus last night from the city commission that they would like to put a ballot initiative on this November for at least starting phase one of that project and I guess if, if that is favorable, then there may be the possibility that the master plan would be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, which would involve some review and action by you, but all they did last night was accept the report as being complete and take it under advisement and take it under the advisement from our electorate as to how they feel about financing any parts of that. So, it could be even as early as their next Monday's agenda where they would consider putting an initiative on the November ballot for a quarter cent sales tax to move forward with that, so.
Will it be worded like the pool, instead of asking citizens if they really want it? Will it be, do you want to pay with it with sales tax or property tax? Are they going to think the question through a little better this time?
I think it might be pretty clear.
Yeah.
This time, but it, from my understanding, it would be a quarter cent sales tax.
When is our organizational meeting?
It is in September.
Okay.
And we, we attached.
Yeah.
Our current membership here and both the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Planning Commission have their organizational meetings in September and we were set for Mr. Householder, who I think is eligible, Mr. Mike Sol is not eligible for reappointment.
Have you served two terms?
I don't know, they sent me a renewal form and...
Okay. I'll have to look at that to see if, I think, if you, if you stepped in for somebody else's term, then you would be eligible.
Yeah.
But I think both yourself and Mr. Householder, if you got expression of interest forms, that you'd be eligible to be reappointed, but we have a couple on the Board of Zoning Appeals where we have openings to be filled and then the other part would be at our organizational meeting, who on the planning commission would want to represent on heritage commission and, and Board of Zoning Appeals, so we'll be doing that in September. And then giving us any unfulfilled goals or ambitions that you have that we're not paying any attention to, so.
Very good. Okay, we are adjourned.